We thank you, Lord, for all of those that are here and those that are on their way. Lord, we ask that you lead and guide and direct us. Give us wisdom, give us knowledge, give us understanding in how we're going to accomplish this in the meeting today. Let us have a meeting that is respectful and orderly. And, Lord, we just ask you to be with us. Lead and guide and direct us. Show us what you would have us to do. And we just thank you, Lord, for this meeting and all of those that are here. We give you praise, we give you honor, we give you all glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. So again, this is the Homeless Task Force meeting. We meet the last Wednesday of every month. Typically, we meet in the Coleman Young Municipal Building, but I think I would like to keep our meetings out in the community. And so my hope actually is that we can maybe have our meetings here every last Wednesday of the month. I think we would draw more people here and the people that we're trying to reach as well, too. And so my hope is that we can keep it here at the Capuchin, the last Wednesday of every month, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. So please, spread the word. Tell family and friends or anyone who you think could benefit from being at the Homeless Task Force meeting. Do we have a representative here from the Soup Kitchen that can bring any opening remarks? Is she here? She's not ready? Okay, she'll be out in a minute. Before we do so, let's start with introductions, starting to my left. Barbara Collins, Outreach Specialist.
James Carey, CCIH.
Ari Ruttenberg, Pro Tem Sheffield's Office.
Kevin White.
Renita Moore, DAC, Connor's Chapter.
Connie Devonford, DAC, Melstrom Chapter.
Levita Binion, DAC, St. Leo's Chapter.
That's Willa Blough.
Rosio Campbell, Sumatero Detroit.
Donna Williams, Southwest Solutions.
Felicia Smith, Fuller, Conyers.
Stevie Washington, Capuchin Soup Kitchen.
Corey Jones, St. Leo's Chapter.
Derek Alexander, NORAH Chapter.
Jessica Pappas, Pappas Consulting Group.
Tanisha Sanders, I go by T from Detroit Action Commonwealth, Connor's Chapter.
Good afternoon, Mary Jones. I'm one of the board members of the Detroit Action Commonwealth Chapter at the Connor Kitchen.
Clark Washington, organizer of Detroit Action Commonwealth and co-chair of Street Outreach Court Detroit.
Arthur Anderson, board member of Melstrom Chapter and the president of Melstrom Chapter.
Dominic Sweeney, DAC member.
Okay, is that it? So we're gonna... Yep. All right. So thank you all again for the introductions. We're now going to have Stephen come up, just so that the general public, who may not be aware of what the Soup Kitchen does, what time you guys are open, what services you all provide, if you could just briefly talk about that so that the general public can be aware.
Once again, thank you all for coming out to the Detroit Task Force for the homeless. Some of the programs that we have here range from the shower program. We have a shower program that help those who may not have running water, that are able to take a shower to receive clean clothing. We have an eat program that where they do a training program for those in the community where they're take them and help them to train them in agriculture training. They partner in with gleaners. It's a nine-month program. They do give them a stifling as well. One of the other programs that they have here is a food service program that they take them, that gives them food at the service center. One of the other programs that they have here, as well as a youth program over at the Connor's Kitchen, there is a children's library as other programs that they have. Also, too, they have the Outreach Court. It's one of the things, that's 36th District coming, they hold court right here in this building that Clark and others was well establishing for those who have tickets. That is a good program that they have. Clark, Mary, and some of the other, that was the first one that was helped during this program. And so they have a program here that also, too, with the food program, that they grow a lot of food that comes into the kitchen. Also, too, they have a, what they have an open market here as well, that they sell produce to the community at a reasonable price. So that's some of the things that they have going on here.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. We're now going to move to our youth committee report by Mr. Ari Ruttenberg.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ari Ruttenberg. I'm with President Pro Tem Sheffield's Office. And I'm on, I work with, we have a youth committee, so it works specifically to provide services and kind of advocate on behalf of homeless youth. And we also meet every month over at Alternatives for Girls in Southwest Detroit. And lately, in the last month, we've been kind of restructuring our committee. So we're, in addition to being a subcommittee of this task force, we're also a subcommittee of the Detroit Continuum of Care Board, which is kind of the board that oversees homeless services in Detroit. So we are restructuring to kind of make ourselves a little more efficient. So we actually brought on a, someone with Southwest Solutions who's working with us, who's kind of be facilitating our meeting so that it kind of frees up some of the members to do a little more of the work on behalf of the youth. And in the last, oh, next month, Alternatives for Girls is actually going to be instituting the first ever, in Detroit, the first ever rapid rehousing program specifically for youth. So this allows youth to get, to get into housing in a better way. And they're going to be implementing that next month with Covenant House, which is another youth provider. So it's the first of its kind in Detroit, and we got that because the youth committee, along with Alternatives for Girls, actually applied for and won funding from the federal government. So we're really happy about that. We're working on a implementation plan to kind of figure out what we're, how we want this, this youth committee to go over the next three months, six months, year to two years. So we kind of have an idea of where we're going, how we can provide better services. And we're also working on, we're working with a young lady named Courtney Smith, who's the executive director of the Detroit Phoenix Center, which is a really amazing organization that she started, that provides services and short-term shelter for homeless youth. Provides a safe space, it provides some mental health care, provides, they provide a place where they can do homework, food, temporary assistance. So it's a really good organization. And she's setting up a youth advisory board, which is made up entirely of youth, so anywhere from 14 to 25, of either homeless or formerly homeless youth, and their decision-making body, and they're actually going to be a part of our youth committee so that the youth actually get to decide what direction we want to go with this. So we want the youth to be directly involved in the work that we're doing. So we hope to have that set up probably in the next month. I think they're actually going to be meeting very soon, I think they're meeting in July, if that's correct. And once that's up and running, they're going to actually be kind of helping make decisions on what happens, like services for homeless youth in Detroit. So we're really happy about that.
Great. Any questions around youth homelessness? Any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you for that report, Ari. We're now going to move to the Homeless Bill of Rights Discussion of Detroit Action Commonwealth. And then, I think we have a cordless mic. And then, really, you all, we want this to be a discussion. So they're going to present their ideas, and let's just engage, act like the cameras are not here. Let's just have some real good conversation and dialogue about maybe what you would like to see in the Homeless Bill of Rights that are not included in what they're presenting, or if you want to react to some of the things that they present, if you have some alternatives or whatever it may be, let's just have some open dialogue about what they're presenting.
Yes, again, my name is Clark Washington. I'm an organizer with Detroit Action Commonwealth, also co-chair of Street Outreach Court Detroit. I'm here not to introduce my daughter, which is Tanisha Sanders. She's the president of our Connor's Chapters and also head up our homeless, our homeless task force that we have within our own organization and stuff, along with other organizations, too. And she's here to present the Bill of Rights to y'all. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Pro Tem. First, I want to tell you about Detroit Action Commonwealth. Detroit Action Commonwealth is a nonprofit, nonpartisan, 501(c)(3) community organization of more than 5,000 members. By organizing low-income individuals and families, Detroit Action Commonwealth builds power to address root causes of poverty, advance justice, promote human development in all its dimensions. We have four chapters, so we have four meetings a week. We have one chapter is Capuchin Soup Kitchen, 4390 Connor. We meet Fridays, 9:45 a.m. Capuchin Soup Kitchen, 1264 Melstrom. We meet here Monday, 10 a.m. St. Leo's, 1, I'm sorry, 4860 15th Street, Tuesday, 11:30 a.m. And the NORAH Project, 23 East Adams, Thursday, 11 a.m. Okay, everyone. I am very passionate about this. Homelessness is a battle that has been a big issue here in Detroit. A large percent of homeless people are due for overpopulated homes, relocating from other states without knowledge, living in abandoned homes or cars on the street, and also shelter to shelter. Homelessness is affecting the elderly, middle-aged adults, youth adults, teenagers, and babies, mental health services also. Mental health also prevent adequate services. Detroit Action Commonwealth have held one-on-one conversations and have completed over 150 surveys. Detroit Action Commonwealth has assessed it, collected data, and now we are presenting our items that the people that we talked to brought to us. Shelter Bill of Rights. Assess basic requirement necessary for sustaining life, including shelter, sanitation, medical care, clothing, and food. Move freely in public places in the same manner as other persons without harassment or intimidation. Have equal opportunity for employment. Receive emergency medical care. Exercise equal civic privileges, including the rights to register to vote and the right to vote. Have personal information protected. Have a reasonable expectation of privacy in his or personal property. Receive equal treatment by state, county, and municipal agencies, and also allow access to a resource of housing and support of housing. That is a big thing, houses and support of housing. Okay. By the local news report, I'm talking about Detroit news, homelessness has improved by 15%, and yes, we are grateful, yet we need more. I am experiencing homelessness situation myself. I returned to Michigan May 25, 2016. First, I lived with my aunt. She moved, so I had to move, too. Then I resided with my best friend on a three-month basis. I knew I was going to be there three months. I stayed with my niece until my granddad got very, very sick, went to help my dad and my grandfather. My grandfather passed away. The house is in Prairie Court, and I am not listed on his will. So that's a big loss to me. Now I am in a housing program with Detroit Central City, integrated, and also with Southwest Solutions. And right now, for me not to live on the street, I am house-sitting for an acquaintance. So I am definitely homeless, but most people don't think so. Woo! I am very passionate and want to stay involved and need the support for the Homeless Shelter Bill of Rights. Thank you.
All right.
I would like to introduce my lead, one of my lead organizers, Cynthia Bell.
All right, Cynthia.
You know what? Let's get in the cordless mic. Yeah, so we could people, yeah, so you guys won't have to feel like you have to just sit. We want you guys to move around, and we thank you for your testimony.
Yes, yes. One more hand for that. Yes.
Good evening, Ms. Sheffield and everyone. My name is Cynthia Bell. I'm an organizer for Detroit Action Commonwealth. We have had problems with citizens coming into the Soup Kitchen, I mean, homeless citizens coming into the Soup Kitchen stating that the Detroit Police is taking them out to the suburbs, taking their money, and leaving them out there. We feel that that is wrong.
That ain't right.
We know that ain't right.
We have, we have went, sat down with the chief of police, members of Detroit Action Commonwealth, asking could they please help with that going on.
Let me just stop you right there. Officer Schenk usually is at these meetings. He's not here today. Would have been great to hear, have him here to hear this from you all. But from my understanding, I heard the same rumors that that took place, and Ari, we just talked about this yesterday, you don't have a microphone, but that is not taking place anymore, and we've heard that from DPD, correct? It was kind of an unwritten policy you mentioned? Come onto the microphone so we can, because we just talked about this yesterday.
So in my conversations, that was never a written policy, but it was widely acknowledged that it's happened in the past. They say it's not happening anymore. I can't verify, but it's never been a written policy, so they can't say, oh, well, we don't, you know, it's not our policy to do that, so we wouldn't do that. So it's one of those things where I think it starts, you know, it starts at the top up. I think we know that it happened during the Super Bowl. We know it's, there's, it still happens occasionally, so, you know, any change would have to happen kind of at the top and go down, and so it'd have to be a change in attitude. But yeah, there's no policy, and they say they're not doing that, but we can't verify individual officers aren't doing something like that.
Correct. Go right ahead.
Oh, you said trafficking?
No, kidnapping someone to do that, yeah. It definitely is a violation.
Whenever it happened, we still feel it wasn't right, so that...
No, no, it wasn't right. I'm not defending it. It wasn't right if it was, if it was done at all in the city of Detroit.
Yes, when we did go and sit down with the chief of police, members of Detroit Action Commonwealth, so that is why we're presenting you the Homeless Bill of Rights.
Thank you so much. And I see that listed in here. I see that listed in here to add in some possible legislation around, around that as well, too. Anyone else presenting?
Talk slow.
Oh, you don't have to come. I can, I can bring it to you.
Okay. My thing is, okay, I was homeless in 2013. I got a place in 2014, okay? From there, then I went to another place. All right. When you got Section 8 and you weren't homeless, and then you end up being homeless again because your Section 8, when they, inspectors come out and they don't, when they inspect something wrong, and then when they don't fix it, then they tell you you have a certain time to move out. Then they put you back in homeless, which I was, and I was moving place to place until, otherwise you stuck there and you have to finish paying out the full amount of rent. So I end up with homeless again for a couple of months and found another place. But my thing is, my question is, why can't, I know, within the Section 8 policy, they have, what's this, what do they call them?
Losing regulations?
No, I'm talking about the inspectors that come out and check the place. I think it would be better if that was separated from them because they still move people's in, go and check them, and they move me, and there'd be stuff still wrong with them. So they're not completely doing the inspection like, then it end up, when they come, then you end up being back getting ready to be homeless again. So I done had that problem, and I'm finna go through that problem again.
I'm sorry, and when they're inspecting the unit, they're doing what that makes you get kicked out of the unit?
Because they inspect it, and then it's...
The unit is not in compliance?
It's not in compliance, and they tell you to move in.
Yes, so...
And when you move in, then you see all this stuff wrong and it need to be fixed.
Got you. No, that's a huge issue, especially with low-income and subsidized housing in the city of Detroit. I have the highest amount of senior, low-income, Section 8 housing in the district, I'm sorry, in the entire city is in my district. And so I'm in and out of Parkview Place and Sheridan Towers and all these other Section 8 low-income housing buildings, and the way in which they are kept is horrible. I mean, you know, the bed bugs, the mold, and they do have some requirements through MISTDA and through the federal government through Section 8, but the city also is responsible for monitoring and some, and compliance as well, too. And so we're working right now through a rental ordinance that we just passed that adds another layer of compliance to some of these buildings outside of MISTDA and HUD that could address some of what you're talking about. So if there's particular properties that you're concerned about that are not in compliance and that need additional level of observation or whatever it may be, let us know, and we can make sure we send out BC, which is the Building Safety and Engineering Department with the city, to come and monitor the compliance in those buildings, because it shouldn't be. No one should live in that condition. I don't care how much money you make. We need quality, affordable housing for everybody. So there was a few hands, and then I do have a special guest here that I want to bring up who can't stay long, who I want her to talk about an event that she's doing for the homeless. So who had their hand up? Brennan?
Yeah, so I'll be real, real brief. So I'm Brandon Snyder. I'm the lead organizer for the Detroit Action Commonwealth, executive director for our sister organization, Good Jobs Now. One of the reasons why we're talking about this is we want to make sure that homeless people are protected and to end the decriminalization of homelessness in the city of Detroit. You know, we have, as Ms. Bell mentioned, a great relationship with the city Detroit Police Officers and the Detroit Police Force. We've met with them, we've talked to them, we work with them, we work with the county around our, around our street court that Clark and Ms. Jones have been able to implement. But there's still issues that continue to take place, and there's still things that are happening to homeless individuals and folks without, temporary without shelter within our community that, in many cases or another, they need additional resources, additional support. Many of the, many of the policies and many of the suggestions on our Bill of Rights are things that are actually in the city charter, are things that are in the Human Rights Division, but are not codified or not enforced. We want to make sure that we continue to work with shelter providers, homeless service providers, and folks who are, who we have a great relationship with, to make sure that these things are enforced and to make sure that these policies that are already on the books and other ones that should be on the books are uplifted and lifted up for people who are being home, for currently homeless. As I believe Tanisha mentioned earlier, that homelessness has decreased in the city of Detroit by 15%, which is a great deal, and a big deal. And it's a lot to say about the work that, that is being done by, by the folks that are in this room and that come to these meetings. And that deserves, that deserves a huge round of applause. But yet, with the massive economic forces that are happening in our community, the massive waves of job, the still-present joblessness and still-present poverty, there still needs to be done more, and there still needs to be a continual effort and a continual alignment between service providers and community organizations like ours. And this is what we hope to accomplish and continue to accomplish with your support. So we want to thank you for spearheading and offering this opportunity for us to engage and talk about policy solutions to the issues of homelessness.
Thank you. And don't go anywhere, because I, what I want to do is, I want to just stop for a point of special privilege to allow her to speak, but I want to go back to some of the concerns and some of the issues that some of the homeless individuals throughout these shelters have raised and how these policies issues will address this. I want to have some more dialogue with you, Brennan, openly here today. But before we do that, Ms. Toni, if you can come up, because she's here visiting from LA, but she's putting together an amazing event for homeless individuals in another week or so, and I want her to come and just speak on the event and what she's doing to give back to the city of Detroit. Do we have a microphone for her? She has an amazing testimony herself. I'm not sure if she wants to just touch on it, but just talk about your event and then what you're here for.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Toni Welch. I'm actually, this is my hometown, Detroit, Michigan, but I'm a resident of Los Angeles, California. I have an organization myself out of Los Angeles, it's for kids, for incarcerated parents. But I'm also a member of the Women's Homeless Center in Los Angeles, and I work on Skier Row, well, I volunteer on Skier Row once a week. So Charles Oakley, I'm partnering with Charles Oakley, the famous basketball player, and he's targeting homelessness. I always get... And he asked me, he said, he came over, he said, Toni, I need to, you know, I want to do a campaign, I want to do a festival, I want to go to some cities and, you know, and feed the homeless. So he, he asked me, he said, you're from Detroit, what do you think about Detroit? And I said, that's a wonderful idea. I think Detroit is, you know, that's my city. I love my city, and it's a wonderful idea. Let's do it. So we come together, he's gonna do it on July 13, and it's going to be at the NSO Community Center, that field that they have back there, and we're gonna make it like a big, it's gonna be like a festival. We're gonna have food, he's gonna actually cook the food. We have also the renowned chef, Penny Davis, she's on the Food Network, she'll be here. They're gonna do it just like, they're gonna have it where, they're actually gonna cook the food, they're gonna serve the food, we're gonna have entertainment, we're gonna, he wants to have, he's gonna bring in celebrities. That day is the Big Three Basketball League. I don't know if anybody been hearing about that on the radio, so they'll be here. So he wants all eyes on it. He wants to bring in celebrities, so it'll bring more attention and to, you know, the seriousness of this epidemic that's going around. So he wants to help, he was like, you know, we need to come in, come into the city, do this project, bring all eyes, any, all eyes that we can, have them focus on this and bring more attention, and let's have a good time doing it. He's very passionate about it. I'm very passionate about it. I talked to Councilwoman Mary Sheffield, I know this is her passion. She said, like, let's do it. I want to help you guys do it. So we'll be here on July 13. Excuse me for being a little nervous. But, you know, I'm trying to give this message.
You are a sister from Detroit.
As well, I just, I just thought it was a beautiful thing. I had came and did it a couple of years ago, and it, the turnout was really good, so I knew that Detroit was one of the cities he had to do it at. You know, it's 12, and Detroit was one of the main cities. We're growing, we look good, like, the city's looking good, like I tell, we are, we're a community, we love one another, we help one another, we try to help pull each other up in Detroit. So come, you know, that, I thought that was amazing and a good thing that we're gonna be doing. And I want everybody, I want everybody involved. Bring your friends, your family, anybody that you know need help and support, we're gonna try to bring out clothing, you know, hygiene packets, you know, we think, want to have people bringing in information about, you know, housing and resources. So I would hope everybody to come join us. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's gonna be July 13 at the NSO Community Center on Martha Luther King and 3rd, and it'll start at 11 o'clock. Well, I have some information that's, okay, they're back there.
Are you printing some out? Oh, they're printing some out for you guys.
The media, we're gonna get immediate attention. Okay.
He's from Detroit. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We would love that.
But the main idea that I want her to come is that you all know a lot of the homeless population, and the main thing is to reach them, so that they can come and get the resources.
So they can come and have a good time, you know?
Bring them out, so that they can connect, get the resources.
They just did Cleveland, and they served Cleveland, I'll come with 700. I said, oh, we can top that. We can top that. We can bring out everybody, you know, we can have a good time, let them hear some music. We bringing our live entertainment. We just want to come in and show our community and show some support and have a good time doing it, and plus, giving out resources and information. Okay?
Okay. She said 11, what time was the time again?
It started 11 o'clock.
11 a.m.
11 a.m., I'm sorry.
At the NSO building. Any other? Okay, is that it? Is any other? About the Bill of Rights, okay, okay, so that's it?
But I do have some flyers, there's some pamphlets.
We have flyers. We'll make sure everybody gets it, and we're gonna send it out as well, too.
But there'll be more information. These are temporary right now because it's, you know, like, I would say it was last minute, but God told me last night, it's no time, it's no moment for being last minute.
No, it's not.
You can wake up and make it happen in the morning, you know, when you helping people, there's no time limit on it, so.
Well, we appreciate you for advocating for Detroit and bringing the event here. We appreciate it. We're gonna do our best to get it out to everybody.
Thank you.
I appreciate you guys. Okay. All right. So now, we're gonna commit the remaining time to talk about the Homeless Bill of Rights. And you're good?
Go ahead.
And so we're gonna open up the floor. General discussion around this, questions, concerns, and go right ahead, and we want to hear from Barbara.
Hi, my name is Connie. Can y'all hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, good. My name is Connie. I just want to collaborate on what Ms. Renee, on what Ms. Renee Needes said about the fair academic that we having, because I'm in an apartment right now that's, that's not being, how would I say, very well-upkept.
that's not being, how would I say, very well up kept. So, I don't know what's going on with that situation or my situation, but I just want to say, you know, I'd be glad, you know, to try and talk to some people, or either try and help, work with them about this, about this academic that everybody's having, mainly when it comes down to apartments and in our homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ari's gonna touch on, we actually have a pending ordinance right now that addresses bedbugs that Council President Brenda Jones introduced, it's in Ari's committee, if you have any detail on that you want to present.
Yeah, so, I'm not sure how much you know, but actually, bedbugs, Detroit's one of the five worst cities in America for bedbugs. It's, it's, it's a real problem here, obviously, and so, Council President Brenda Jones introduced an ordinance, and so, they are working on it, it's in committee, hopefully it'll be passed soon, and it kind of puts, it, it puts into law some of the things regarding bedbugs that a, that a landlord is required to do. So, if you move into an apartment and they find that there were bedbugs already in there, it makes the, it forces the developer to pay to, to get that cleaned, and it, it makes them be responsible for that, so they can't just move you into an apartment and then just say, "Oh, well, you have bedbugs." So, it actually puts some responsibility onto the landlord to make sure that they get rid of the bad bugs, they also have to, it also puts in place some restrictions in terms of getting each apartment checked for bedbugs before you move in, so they have to get some sort of certificate before you move into an apartment that says, "No, we've had this inspected," or at least "We've had the building inspected and there's been no bedbugs found." So, they do it both on an annual basis and then before someone moves in, so it is something that we're trying to address, because it is a bit, a bad problem here in Detroit, and no one should have to go through that.
I got a question, where do they come from? Because we never had that problem the last 20, 30 years, you know? And the wise tale that they used to say, sleep tight, don't let the bed, well, I never seen one, you know, but where are they coming from?
They hit chikers.
So, they do, they can, the problem, the reason they're such, they're so bad is that if you go, you could literally go to someone's house or even go to, you could go to a job, they can have, you could have them at someone's job. We did have, we had them in our building, so if you go into a building that has it, it could, it could actually hitch a ride on your body and you could take it home, so it's, it's like a virus, they're really, really contagious. I don't know why they're so much worse now than they were 30 years ago, I have no idea, but you're right, it is.
Every now and then you'll see somebody driving a car or something like that, you know, and you'll say, you know, "What did they say, were they gonna get bedbugs?" And then they disappear, and all of a sudden, we can't go to the village.
Yeah, I, I have no idea why, but the city is addressing it, and we're taking it seriously, yeah.
The city is, as much as we can, yeah, for sure. Well, you need it for recording purposes.
But, but anyway, when we was talking about the bedbugs, one thing, you can get on a bus, you can be sitting in, anywhere they leap out on you, and they, they like, they like a finessation where they gonna travel, they travels, you know, it's like a carrier, 'cause you get on your clothes, you ain't got to be, just go anywhere, you know? I don't been everywhere in this country, you get all kind of bugs every kind of way, you know, and some of them just attached to your clothes, your bags, you know, anything, umbrella, anything, you know, and you can take them home with you, you don't know they there, and they accumulate, just like a roach, they accumulate.
Okay. Is it about bedbugs? Okay, 'cause I don't want to talk about that.
So, so I briefly wanted to chime in in regards to the housing standards. So, there's a housing quality standard inspection that's done for every place, like CMH, they are a management company that, that seeks out housing people in the community, and those inspections, like someone just mentioned, that they should be governed not only by the, the state and federal, but the landlords as well, because like Ari said, this is done annually, and you know, you want your place up to snuff continuously all throughout the year, not only what you're doing, but them to come in and do the, the quality maintenance as well, so, so that's very important.
Oh, it is, it is.
Do you want me to add something about the fair housing, then?
Go right ahead, and then I want to move to.
So, another thing I want to point out is that Pro Tem Sheffield is working right now, we're working on an ordinance, it's called a Fair Housing Ordinance, so there's fair housing rules federally that say, actually, even at the state level, that say you can't discriminate based on, on age, or race, or country of origin, so different things that you can't discriminate on. So, Pro Tem Sheffield is working on an ordinance that we're doing that would say you also can't discriminate based on, on...
Vouchers.
What was it?
Class vouchers, section vouchers.
Vouchers, so you can't discriminate based on, on your payment form, that means vouchers. So, one of the problems we've been finding here in the city is that people who have Section 8 vouchers, they can't get into an apartment, because a lot of apartment buildings don't want to accept them for some reason. That's a form of discrimination.
Yes.
So, unfortunately, that's not actually in the laws that say you can't do that, so right now, that's a legal form of discrimination, so what we're working on is trying to ban that and to say that, no, if the only reason you don't want them in there is because they have a Section 8 voucher, that's illegal.
Right.
So, we're working on that right now, we're actually meeting with our lawyers on Friday, so once that passes, and I, and I don't see any reason why they wouldn't pass, that actually should be able to help with some of the housing problems, because some of these developers who just, some of these landlords who are just saying, "No, the only reason we don't want you in here is because of the vouchers," they can't do that, that won't be legal, because that is a form of discrimination.
Right, and we'll have that on the books, and I think Brandon, and to the Detroit Action Commonwealth, I think that addresses number nine on your, on your list of demands here, and I also want to just add, our, well, the, everyone's demands, I also want to add, you know, with the amount of new residential units that are coming online, it's so important that you have that clause, because most of these buildings are receiving tax breaks, public funding for their buildings, and are still not accepting vouchers for people who are low-income. And so, with this in, in actual ordinance on the books, I think, again, it helps allow access for low-income people to have access to some of these new developments that we're seeing downtown Detroit and really all over the city, to make sure that they're setting aside, setting aside units for low-income people, and then those low-income people who have vouchers can now have access to some of those developments, which I think is really, really, really important. There's a few questions, questions, go right ahead.
Yes, as it relates to shelters, how does a city or how, your organization takes care of regu, you know, regulating that these, the people that are over these shelters? Because we have people that come into the soup kitchen who are in shelters and situations where they're, they're, you know, out, they have to be out, like, at a certain time, and then they can't come back for a certain time, particularly in the winter months when it's cold outside. So, we have people that come into the soup kitchens because they need somewhere to be, you know, and then the question of how are these shelters being regulated to make sure that they are meeting the requirements as far as it relates to bedbugs?
Yeah.
Or, we've had people that have complained about inadequate showers, or where, situations where people's food stamp, you know, they're supposed to give so much off of the food stamp card, but they're not getting adequate foods. So, my question is, is how is that being regulated that these shelters are complying as they're supposed to be, and what's done if they're not in compliance? As far as doing what they're supposed to be doing for the people that are in these shelters?
That's a great point, and I think this is a good takeaway for me, is that maybe we can do a memo to request that our Building Safety and Engineering and Environmental Department actually go out. First of all, they're supposed to do it anyway, I'm not sure how often they do it on a regular basis that they inspect these buildings, but it would be good to, to request a report from B.C. to see when was the last time all of our shelters, homeless shelters, were examined, and what actual penalties or fines or violations were found, and how that particular development or that shelter is in compliance now with those particulars violations, and so we can make sure we submit that. But to answer your question, B.C. is a city's department that goes out and does all the code enforcement in the city of Detroit, that's the Building Safety and Engineering and Environmental Department, and they're supposed to do that on a regular basis, whether that's monthly or quarterly, I'm not sure, I can check for you, but that is a department within the city that does that. I'm not, I'm not sure.
They definitely shouldn't be.
Yeah.
They shouldn't be taking anyone's food stamps, but, but to, to add to that as well, their, the continuum of care that oversees kind of all the homelessness services, they actually do have so...
The C.O.C.?
Yeah, so there's also, there's an agency called HAND, Homeless Action Network of Detroit, they're the lead agency for the city of Detroit. You can actually, and I've personally done this when people have called with, with complaints about shelters, you can actually submit a complaint, and since they're the, they're the organization that oversees all the funding, they can go and investigate those claims, and sometimes, in some cases, I've talked to people, sometimes they've found that there were instances where something took place, and they will go and they, they take care of it, so there is a board that oversees it. How well it's, it's working right now, that's a different story, I can't say, but they, they do respond to that stuff, so if you ever do have a complaint, you can actually contact our office, or you can contact the Homeless Action Network of Detroit, and they will look into claims of that.
And then he has a question, go ahead.
Okay, so recipient rights are, are involved in all the places that provide services where people are experiencing homelessness, mental illness, and so you can complain if the place that you are at or the shelters that you experience are, are not up to snuff. So, a lot of times, you have Salvation Army who has, who, who allocates funds for the services that, that the shelters provide, so at the same time, they need to be in conjunction with the building code inspectors, with the, with the health department, because while I was at NSO, we had the health department come by every six months, and so, it, I think it should be every three months, because so many people come and, and have respite there at this, at the shelter, that it needs to be continuously kept up, and, and it needs to be looked at continuously. So, that's a great point you bring, because a lot of stigma is put on shelters because they have bedbugs. You have people that sit in the street and under the viaducts and over the, then the gas stations, they don't want to go to the shelter because this great stigma is, is implicated in regards to how shelters exist, bedbugs, people there are, are, are in trouble and a lot of fights and stuff like that, which is not actually true, you know, so great point you raised, and we must definitely have to get, get tighter on that.
Great point, great point. Go right ahead, oh, go ahead.
The only thing, too, I wanted to say with our care packs when we get from anybody, can you guys start putting 91% to 100% alcohol in it, they kill the bedbugs on contact? I'm allergic to them, so I have to have alcohol on me at all times, because I blow up like a hot potato, I'm talking, I look like, you know, when you get burnt, that's how my, my bedbug bites look. So, I can't deal with, I found out 100% alcohol to 91%, keep it on you at all times, when I hug people, I just walk away and spray, I don't worry about it.
Amen. Okay, and, and again, when it comes to shelters, you have a great point here, right here at...
Before you go down?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, okay, oh, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Amen, amen. So, so, so number one and two, access to basic requirements and necessities for sustaining life, including shelters, that's respite as well. Up, up, up in the top, a top portion, it has right to rest, we call that respite, where a person can come and get off the streets, take showers and feed themselves. So, when you have sanitation, medical care, clothing, and food, the services at the shelter should also include social services, services that assist people who are in their homes is not maintained, you know, and so, I think that's one thing we should also add with this as well, social services, case management while the shelter is existing, and have people come in and get those services as well.
Brendan, do you have a reaction to that, as far as one?
I think that, again, the cover of the press and what we found in research is that the vast majority of policies that were... Sorry, thank you.
What we're, what we're saying is the vast majority of the policies that, that, that we're calling for amongst this Bill of Rights, you know, are founded in human rights, co, of the, of the charter. What we're saying is that in many cases, they're not being enforced, and in many cases, there are other ones that can be updated, so I think that, that, you know, we all in this room, I'm, I'm assuming, want to end homelessness, you know, not continue it, not delay it, but what we want to make sure is that we're working together and that there is a way that these, these policies can A, be enforced and updated for our charter.
Gotcha. So, I, I just have a quick question as it relates to number three. So, have equal opportunities for employment, people using shelter addresses not being hired? So, can you speak, I know that may have came up several times with people who are, who are experiencing homelessness, if they're using the actual address for a shelter, they're not having access to employment? I want you to kind of expand on that.
Yeah.
And then also, the, the idea of voting, so they're not able to vote if they're using a shelter address?
Yeah, two points, and I, I think Ms. Bell, if you, if you raised this point when we were talking the other day, or was it Clark, if you, if you all want to jump in for this, but I can, I can, I can, I can take lead. So, we lead one of the largest get-out-to-vote efforts for shelter, unsheltered people in the city of Detroit, at the D.A.C. For the last 10 years, we've been doing, we've been taking people to vote across the city and making sure people are able to vote on-site through the absentee process, who are, who are homeless, formerly incarcerated, low-income citizens. With this process, what we found is that in many cases, when we take people to go vote at their, at their, at their polling place, at their precinct, what they're being told is that their precinct, their address isn't listed because it's the Capuchin Soup Kitchen, or it's, or it may be the, or it may be a shelter. Now, now, understand, let me say this, let me say this, you know, you know, as crystal clear as possible, this may be an issue of poll worker training and their understanding around what is required and how identificate, what identification that you can use, but nonetheless, by telling someone that, "Hey, you're not able to vote here," you're effectively disenfranchising that person as well.
For sure, yeah, for sure.
In addition...
Go, go ahead.
In, in addition, one...
Let them respond to that, because I want to make sure we keep all these points together.
Two points on that, I want to say, one, I want to see what C.O.C. or Ari's going to do.
He's my representative on the book.
So, I'm gonna give you my cell number, I work for the school system, but when we hear these complaints, because I have a lot of families, when you think of an adult that's homeless, a lot of times they have kids, so these, these things become apparent to me in regards to the bedbugs, the putting them out of the shelter, not letting the family come into the shelter with kids that are a male, and that's a certain size male, they don't want the child in there, so if, I'll give you my number, you give us these complaints, we'll run them through HAND, and we'll take care of it through the C.O.C. Well, I was gonna say about the voting piece, talk with Janice Winfrey, I'll give her a call as well to see, because you're right, I've noticed, because I do some polling stuff on, on, when it's time to vote, and there's some things that need to be reiterated at the trainings with those poll workers, so they'll understand the, those rights that those folks have in regards to voting. So, I don't know if you talked to Mrs. Winfrey personally or not?
We have. This time last year during the first race, we brought all five of the top, of the top candidates to go on the ballot for the person to talk about issues that will come home with the face.
Right, right.
And one of the pieces that we mentioned, and the solution that Mr. Winfrey offered at that point was on-site, at the soup kitchen, which is a, a, a help, but it is not the, it is not the end-all, be-all solution to this issue.
Correct, correct, correct.
Brendan, I have a question for you. Do you know if people can use the city's municipal ID as a form of ID when it comes to voting?
And I, again, I think this is partly where there's some, there's, there's a lack of clarification, because in the state law that you don't need a, you don't, you don't need ID, you can, you can do an affidavit to say that you're a person and who you are to be able to go vote, but I think there's some miscommunication amongst poll workers and maybe at the, at the clerk's office themselves around what qualifies as identification and what can verify that you're able to vote, and what ultimately ends up happening is that it impacts and harms and disenfranchises our community group.
Yep, great point.
Yeah, and one more thing with the D.A.C. too, on Fridays at our Connors Chapter, we help people get state IDs and birth certificates, and we only charge them a dollar. So, you know, I mean, so, I mean, so it's no reason to say, you know, they ain't got no ID to go vote and stuff, come see us, we'll get your ID, okay? Yeah.
We don't charge nothing, but we take a dollar donation.
Yeah, right, we don't charge this dollar donation.
But we are a pay, a dues-paying organization, it is $12 for the year, but it's so many services, I have a table with resources on housing, I have mental issues, I just add on Phoenix, which is the youth issue, you know, and I hit like 20 kids just the other day, and it really touched me, because I didn't know these 20 kids was homeless like because I didn't know these twenty kids was homeless like this. I thought they were just coming in for the poem program they have there. You know, I didn't know until they came up to me like, can I get that card? And see, that helps out the resources. So everybody, if you got a center, please do cross-resourcing. Court, you have to give from a C W, he'll let you know. But I do have, we have our four meetings at all the kitchens. And the day we give our IDs and birth certificates is Fridays at nine forty-five at the Connors Chapter, four-three-nine-zero Connor.
Hi, my name is Crystal and I work for Neighborhood Legal Services. Also, I'm talking about the homeless ID. I work with human trafficking victims. And we have some that are here from other countries that we are housing in shelters. And I have one client that it was hard for us, we couldn't get her birth certificate, you spoke on birth certificate. We couldn't get it because she works, she came from Haiti. And that ID alone was five hundred dollars, so we had to go another route for her, just to try to obtain some type of ID. So I was wondering, is like, when you have a person in that situation, how can we assist them? If they do have a, come from another country to get their birth certificate?
It sounds like they're directing you to, yeah.
Okay, so when people come in that's from other countries or other states, because we've had other states, other countries, other, I mean, places I never knew was places, really. And so what we do first, we have to establish them here. So you, your company, you establish them, your letterhead with their name on it, that's one establishment. A voter's, you know, voter's card is an ID. But municipal ID is also an ID because you're making, and then also any medical bills, anything. You just have to do a footprint. You just gotta footprint them. Okay, okay. Can me and you talk one-on-one because I have other alternatives. When people can't get help, I have other alternatives. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm still here. It's good to see this task force, see my friend James and Mary Sheffield and Minister, God bless you. It's good to be here. Sometimes I feel out of place. Right? And so that's how the homeless feel. You have to allow people and make people feel important. You have to make people feel like they actually care. The pamphlet that she handed out was, "I am human." You have to really take time with people. Mary brought out something that was real great. I worked in a lot of shelters. I quit jobs at shelters because of how they treated clients. I quit jobs at treatment centers, facilities, because of how they treat clients. Because I just think we ought to treat everybody the same. But as you see, everybody is not treated the same. Right? And so I understand that. I understand that. But one of the things, that's one of the things that hurt homelessness the most. Just to treat people like they are human beings. Just to take the time and say something nice. Right? And don't look over folks. Look past them, walk past them, don't talk. So this homeless task force is a great thing to do and for us to get involved with. The Bill of Rights, Mary brought out something that was really, I thought that over the years I have always seen, and that is putting people out, you know, at a certain time. They don't know where to go. Where are they going? So this Bill of Rights, as we look at it, as we present it, it's important. It's important to motivate homeless people. To motivate them, to actually motivate, to just, don't just have them there, but have them in a place where, okay, we can save your money. Because most people who are homeless got incomes. Right? But they just don't have the people to put the resources or the time into them. Me and James, we worked many times together and we worked at the same facility. And he has worked in a lot of places, and so he takes the time. And that's what it's gonna really take, even us as DAC. We deal with the homeless on a regular basis. We talk to the homeless. I do, I talk to them a lot. Mostly, everybody that's on DAC, they do talk to the homeless. So they have an understanding of what homelessness is. Right? And so we need to really push the Bill of Rights, we really need to. And look, take a look at it. It's not a demand, it's a necessity. It's a necessity. It's very important. I'm gonna say this and I'm gonna let the mic go. God bless you for coming. Last year, we fed seven hundred, right there on Third and... James sees us every year. Nineteen years we've been doing that.
Amen.
Right? And so we're gonna continue to do it. But Mary, God bless you. I know you're a great woman and we want to team up. Minister, James, we want to team up. But it's gonna take some work. We got our hands full. We got, this homeless task force is very, very important. And so that's why DAC is reaching out to you. Because you're gonna be a great help to us, as you always are. So we want to be a great help to this.
Before you take, Reverend Anderson, I hear what you're saying and I come to these tables and I hear all the concerns, the questions, if you will. I'm about solutions, and if you're not part of the solutions, you're part of the problem. And so we sit here and we talk and we talk and we talk, but where do we begin, you know, to make a change? A change has to take place. And I understand, I've been working around homelessness for fifteen years. And I see how it hurts me to see people sitting in chairs all night. That's inhumane to me, that someone has to sit there. People have died sitting in a chair all night. That's inhumane. So where do we begin this fight is where we need to begin. Where do we begin with this fight?
I would say right here.
That's true. This is it, Barbara, and with you here by my side.
All right. I'm by your side, but we're gonna begin this fight and we're going to bring somebody else to these meetings. You know, you bring the homeless people because, see, we have to understand what they're feeling. So they're the ones that need to be at this meeting so we can begin to conquer these issues that's going on. They getting their food stamps taken away. They need to be here to talk about these issues. So we have to know what to direct our attention to. Hallelujah.
We have a can here, in here. We have two cans, yep, here and here.
I just wanted, I work with the school system and I notice you doing a lot of talk about homeless. But my concern is that this year I experienced a kid that couldn't finish school because they were homeless. What about these children? What's happening with them? How can you get them to school? Where they can attend school so they don't have to fail because their parents are homeless?
So we have the leading man right here who deals with DPS and youth homeless. And then we also have a subcommittee on youth homelessness. I think you may have came in a little bit late, but go ahead, if you don't mind.
I'm glad she brought that up. Part of my role is to bring awareness to that. And that's why I got on the task force, because again, what I said earlier, when you think of homelessness, a lot of times people don't assume, don't think about the children. So the role that I have, which is a monumental task, is to make sure all community agencies, places where youth hang out, the buildings are tagged that say, hey, if your child meets these criteria, call this number and we can make sure that they get into school. Because it's a federal law that says every public school in the world, in the country, has to have a person that does what I do. And so what that means is we identify them and we get them in school immediately without barriers. So the birth certificate issue, that's not an issue. So this child, I don't, was it a twelfth grader? Okay, so any child between, from pre-K through twenty-six, if they receive a special ed services, are entitled to be able to stay in school. And then we are to remove barriers to keep them out of school. So for example, in our district, uniforms is things that kids have to wear. So if we have homeless families, we make sure that they get uniforms. Because we don't want them to stay out of school and it cannot be denied enrollment. So when parents need to know their rights, and then those rights are enforced. But I meant to give my number out earlier, so I'm gonna give it to you now. It's three-one-three... ...seven-four-eight... ...six-three-eight-eight. That's Eason, George Eason. Yep, and so if you have any issues with kids, even if they're not in my district, I know how to find who the liaison for is in that district and they will make sure those kids get in school and stay in school.
Repeat your number, George.
Three-one-three... ...seven-four-eight... ...six-three-eight-eight. Or if you reach any school in the city, that's a DPS school at least, ask for the liaison and they'll get the information to you.
And just to add real quick, so we do every year, you know, there's the point in time count that counts the homeless throughout the city of Detroit. And we do a youth one from our youth committee every year. This year, for the first time, we actually went into the schools. And George actually went in, he only had enough resources to do surveys at one school. And in one high school, they found fifteen, we found fifteen homeless youth. And that was just one high school in the city of Detroit. We know there are hundreds or thousands more. So for the first time, starting next year when we do this, we're gonna actually try and go into every public school. So once, maybe the leadership of Detroit Public Schools knows the, kind of the, how big of a problem this is, we're hoping once, you know, some of the city leaders find out that, okay, this is a lot more of a problem than we realized, we're hoping we can get more resources, so.
And whatever those resources are, you let us know and we can help you so you can expand next time. Yeah. Good. Wow, okay. Great.
Yeah, how you guys doing? My name is Marlon Welch. I'm actually her son. So I've been going around trying to assist her in some things that she was doing and meeting at these different facilities like the NSO Building and like the Mariners Inn and things like that. I was interested in doing, actually providing houses for like veteran homeless people and homeless people in general. So I was, you know, going and seeing and, you know, doing investigative, trying to figure out how I could go about that. And like, from some of the things people said and from the people that I talked to, like when I went to the NSO Building and the Mariners Building, and I think it's another NSO Building on Oakman. It's a big, big facility over there. Yeah, so from my experience, what I've seen, like those, those buildings and those places were like, kind of very well-upkept and things like that. And we was talking about the transition from being homeless to going to transitional housing to permanent housing. And, you know, through those conversations, what I realized is it's about, when they say you have these issues with bedbugs and these type of buildings like that, it's like pride and ownership when it comes to the people who providing, providing these homes. So I think it's like, with me, it's about connecting to people who would take pride in the housing that they're providing for the homeless. And I think, I just wanted to say that, you have to find those people and try to connect with those people who have that type of compassion. And it's just not about the finances or things like that.
Yeah, so that's very important. And another thing I wanted to expound on is the stigma placed on people experiencing homelessness. I've encountered so many people who are experiencing homelessness who have illustrious backgrounds. They just fall on bad times. You know, and so for society to look at those individuals as they are cast off or downtrodden, that's not good. But most definitely, young man, it's important that these places, these project-based places that have housing attached to the building, they need to be as great as, like Ms. Sheffield was saying, they need to be very, very good places to live, quality, low-income homes. And so the conversation has to be had. And this, what we're doing right now is having the conversation. I know my colleague, Ms. Collins, she speaks about solutions. She's solution-driven. But we have to make enough noise at this level so the next level can hear it and they can come down and we can interact with them and make these things happen. But it's a great, great opportunity. I wish you would continue that work in bridging the gap that's set in place for people who are experiencing homelessness and the stigma that's placed on them as well.
Yeah, we're gonna continue to fight. And like I was telling him, he had never had the chance to see the effects it has in Los Angeles. And, you know, those conditions that those people are living in is horrible. You know, anywhere is horrible. But like, when I came here, I'm happy, you know, I was really surprised, like I told him, that we take a lot of pride. These places, you know, they're clean. We want to, you know, help each other. Because if you go there and see how those people are living compared to here, we're doing, you're doing amazing, good job. The city is doing a good job, even though it don't seem like it, they are doing a good job. And this task force, I think it's a wonderful thing. I commend you for doing this because we taking pride in this. We really taking pride. And when Charles presented this to me and it says homeless, but we're human. And that's, anybody can fall on hard terms, anybody. I've met some real doctors, lawyers, you know, I mean, I've met some people that you wouldn't, you would be surprised that end up homeless. Yeah, even like, okay, even like Henry Butler, he's part of the campaign. He's, his family is wealthy and his son is homeless. He's just, you just don't know.
I know, I know a guy here in the city of Detroit who is homeless, who is a panhandler. I know him by name. Every time I see him, we stop, we talk. He comes from a wealthy family, but he's struggling with addiction and drugs. And so of course, your family may cut you, whatever it may be, but you would be surprised, the background and history of these people. And most of them educated, have skills, can give back to society. But we just have to do a better job again, and how do we cultivate that and provide an environment for them to succeed?
And talking to them and making them our friends and understanding. We gotta understand what's going on and help them. I just wanted to say that. I think you guys are doing an amazing job and I'm proud and happy to be a part of this. Thank you again.
A couple of hands up here. Oh, George, let's just make our way around.
One thing we are doing too, and I think Ari might have left that meeting, Michelle on the task force was talking about, and I think she said about solutions. We're talking about trying to ensure that we know all the resources. We got a lot of things going on in the city, but the left hand don't know what the right hand is doing. So we trying to do something where we monthly updating a resource manual that lets us know, for example, you can help with birth certificates, you're on the east side. You're doing what you do in the mid-city. School system, we're doing X, Y and Z so that, one, everybody knows what's happening and then we can help push the information. Because that's the key, trying to get the information out. So I just wanted to make that point.
That's why it's so important that we get the word out and let people know that we have this meeting going on so people can come together. Absolutely. So we can begin to come together. Because this is some good information that I'm getting. I'm taking notes.
Yep, just take it back.
No.
Most definitely. I don't mind, I don't mind at any time, but let's, okay, let's just go down the row and then you can go.
So one more thing around, around solutions and being solution-oriented. You know, we also have to be thinking about structural solutions as well to the problems that plague people and the macro and microeconomic forces that are keeping, that are causing people to be homeless in the city of Detroit. One of the big solutions that we're proud of and we want to continue to advocate for is the Housing Trust Fund that your administration pushed for. So cities like Detroit, I know we're in our infancy of it being, you know, established, but cities like Kalamazoo, Michigan, which is a smaller capacity than Detroit, smaller population, use that Housing Trust Fund to actually move homeless, homeless and temporarily unhoused families and children from being homeless, from being without shelter, using those funds. So I think, so I think when we look at, when we look at solutions, we have to continue to look at the structural solutions like policy and we have to continue to make sure that we're working together, you know, with offices and administrations like yours and with the administration of the mayor to make sure that we have more of those structural solutions like that.
I agree. Great point, Brendan. Great point.
Hi, my name is Kevin White and I'd just like to bring to your attention that I'm a bike cyclist. And if you ride around the city and you look to see the way the city or the state got their own bike lanes way out in the street, it's appalling to me because of the fact, it seemed like the federal government and states setting the citizens up of Detroit and Michigan up for failure to be hit by cars, you know, that's very dangerous. If I want to ride in the middle of the street, I will ride in the middle of the street. But by being hit before, I'm scared to ride in the bike lanes because of the fact they out there in the middle of the road. So as you go about today or whatever, take a look at this, you know. It's a situation that really need to be addressed because that's very, very dangerous.
I'll make sure that our planning and development partner is, excuse me, department is aware of that. And then also I can give you a direct contact, since you are a cyclist, maybe you can provide some insight to them. They're in the design phase right now, so some stuff that you see is not permanent. They're testing certain things. And we would love to have your feedback. But I'm sure whatever they're doing, there has to be some type of requirements or some guidelines in which they're implementing the lanes. And so, we would love to hear your feedback. So I'll make sure I get that to the appropriate department.
Thank you very much.
All right. Huh? They do. I agree. Oh, I agree. Yeah. Huge education and awareness, yep.
Right, right.
Yep, yep, I agree. I agree with you.
I just got one more thing to say because the bike lane is way out in the road. So the buses have to cross the bike lane to get back to the car.
Are you referring to Jefferson by itself? Okay, got you.
All those streets, man, yes, dangerous.
Can I piggyback on IDs for a second?
Oh, I was just gonna say, in response to that, so the bike lanes on Jefferson, that is temporary. They're gonna, they're gonna, within a few years, they're gonna tear up all of Jefferson and then redo it into a more pedestrian and cyclist-friendly street. Because it's true, Detroit, despite Detroit having a lot of bikers and a really long, good biking tradition... Because it's true, Detroit, despite Detroit having a lot of bikers and a really long, good biking tradition, motorists in Detroit are not the most, um, cyclist friendly. So I agree on the PSAs and I know the, so for the first time, I think in the history of Detroit, we have what's called a Mobility Director for the City of Detroit that deals specifically with mobility related to pedestrians and cycling. So that, that is something that the city is, is starting to take seriously. And I think you're gonna see it become more pedestrian friendly as, as we go further.
Good. Okay, so piggybacking on the IDs, um, Detroit Action Commonwealth, we, we were convincing the state, the, the Michigan Secretary of State to establish a policy to waive ID car fees. So you don't necessarily have to come to Detroit Action Commonwealth. If you have a letter stating that you're, you know, well, it gotta be a certified letter about homeless. But if you go to DHS and you get food stamps or any services, you get that print out, you take it to Secretary of State, they do not charge you any money to get your ID if you have your proper paperwork. So you don't have to come to DAC for it because we, we took Michigan Secretary of State to court for this. Because it's, there is one of their policies that they wasn't letting anybody know about. Okay?
And another thing I want to touch on, and forgive me for one second. Another thing I want to touch on is so important, I'm a certified community health worker, is, is what, what's here in, um, on, on, on number four, receiving emergency medical care. Emergency medical care is so vitally important for people experiencing homelessness because we go so long without being cared for. And, and so, uh, this is a great, um, bill of rights. I think this should be pushed very hard. Because once, the Housing First Model says that everything, yes. The, the Housing First Model speaks to, to all of these things that present themselves while you're experiencing homelessness diminished when you're housed. Not you go to treatment and then you come to see you get ready housed. No, you get housed first and these things diminish. So healthcare and medic- medical care is paramount.
Couple more hands?
This is a very important question that I really need to ask because this has been going on for years now. All these abandoned houses, apartment buildings, some of them haven't even been stripped at all. They still have everything in them. But my question is this, if we all trying to get together and pull the homeless up off the streets, why not put them in them places?
Yeah, I mean, we, no, it deserves a round of applause. We, we've talked about this for quite some time. And in, in fact, when we started the task force, that was one of our first kind of pilot programs that we wanted to do. The thing is, how do you sustain it? So you could say put somebody in house, how the gas bill is gonna get paid for? How do you, you know, so we have to create a program that would actually offer that. So I'm open to doing it, but again, how do you sustain it? If this person is homeless, how the lights gonna be, uh, you know, water bill isn't gonna be paid for. Right. And so I'm open to it. I think it's a great idea. We have the housing stock here, but how do you create a program that can, and actually be sustainable? Who is we? Uh, DAC?
All right.
Oh, yeah. Uh, July 6th, July 6th, we're having our tenure.
We're gonna do announcements and events at the.
Okay, yeah, cause I was.
Yeah, we got you.
Yeah, get it going.
Couple other questions? Okay, she. Behind you, he's giving you the mic.
And also too, isn't there some kind of way that since the city is, is bringing in all this money from all these businesses and stuff, can't they put some of that money aside for, for the, for a program like that?
Yeah, so we, we have a Housing Trust Fund, I think that Brandon just, just talked about, that we, that was created through our ordinance. Uh, it was seeded with about $500,000, which is not a lot. Uh, we were promised 2 million, but we're still working on that. And so that can help fund housing and programs like what you just talked about. We also have a Neighborhood Improvement Fund that I created from the Pistons coming to Detroit. Money can go into that fund. It captures their income taxes. It goes into that fund that can be used for housing, uh, and things of that sort. But I think we need to generate some more money first because right now, $500,000 is not enough to sustain anything. So we need more money in that, in that pot of, uh, in that pot, and then we can start creating a program around that. But great, great point. Let's just try to get some money in that fund and then we can start to create some programs around housing and things of that sort. Okay, thank you. Now we, if we had another question behind you?
Yeah, I just had a question about, um, what the city is anticipating in terms of, um, the Medicaid, the new Medicaid law that just got passed, uh, and signed by Governor Snyder around, uh, work for Medicaid. And what exactly the city had, like what impact the city is anticipating from that? Because especially for homeless citizens, like people who are on, uh, or sorry, Medicare, um, like in terms of transportation and everything else that you need for a job, um, like it, it just, it seems to me that it would be a big, um, impact on low income ci- uh, citizens in the, uh, in the, uh, yeah, in Detroit, basically.
Yeah, so I, I'm not an expert on that, but I do know, um, essentially it's meant to, uh, punish Detroit really. Because they even tried to do a carve out for, uh, some counties, like majority white counties in, outside of Detroit. They essentially said some of those wouldn't be, uh, Exactly. So thi- this is a deliberate attempt by the Michigan Legislature to essentially punish urban cities and majority black cities. So I, I haven't heard anything from the city side yet, but. Yeah, we could look into it and I, I. My hope is a legal challenge will happen because that's, that's unfair. And I think it's, it sounds like something that should be unconstitutional. So, um, but yeah, I, I don't know enough about that yet.
So it's just poor legislation. Let's just say that. It's poor legislation that's geared at, at low income areas, you know, marginalized areas. Medicaid got half a trillion dollars to do business a couple of years ago. Half a trillion dollars. That's why everybody wanted to bill Medicaid for all the services that, that's provided through, for, for human services. When they got that money, it's like every entity, every agency saying, let's get Medicaid billable. So now they want to talk about excluding, uh, a demographic, uh, uh, area and people. They got trillion, half a trillion dollars. That's 650, well, I was gonna say 500 million dollars to operate. So they have plenty money, but we have to make sure that, that, that doesn't happen. That's just poor legislation that takes place in, in the cities, okay?
Yeah, I like to make a announcement too, though. Uh, with one of our, with one of our chapters, the St. Leo's chapters, uh, they have medical and dental programs for anybody in the city of Detroit that don't have insurance, that's not covered by insurance. You can come over to St. Leo's, get dental work done and get medical to get all your prescriptions filled. If you don't have insurance. I don't know the quiet days that they over there now, right now, but they over there every month? Every other Tuesday for what? For the medical or the dental? The medical? Uh-huh, yeah. But, uh, they're there. But they have it listed on the board. Uh, I usually take a picture of it, uh, of the dates for every month. Haven't got, uh, the ones for July yet. But yes, there's free dental for anybody in the city of Detroit that don't have insurance. Free dental and free medical at St. Leo's, which is, uh, on 15th and, and Grand River.
All right. A few other hands and questions?
Well, two questions. Um, you know, we're talking about, like you were saying about solutions. And, um, my question is, and, and have you guys ever thought about like, you know, we have community meetings, there are people in shelters, there are different people that were affected. Have you guys ever thought about going to them and, you know, who, who all of us on you and sit down and talk to these people, come to some of our community meetings? Cause what we found out when we did this program with our street court, we brought the court to the people. And it makes such a big difference because I have gone through homelessness myself. And it makes a big difference when the people who are sitting around making the decisions and talking about stuff. But if you actually sit down with a person face to face and you can hear their story and you can, you know, you can understand, like we deal with a lot of people in the soup kitchen that have all kinds of issues. You know, with being in shelters and mental illness and alcoholism and being incarcerated. And so what we found out with doing that court program that I'm telling you, bringing these people to the people. Because a lot of, the whole thing about this is that a lot of people think that they're the people that are in these positions that don't care anything about anybody. Or they look at them as a statistic and a number. So I just kind of want to put the suggestion out there that maybe you guys can discuss it about actually, you know, setting up a time where you go to these shelters or you, you come to a soup kitchen or you go to NSO or go into the public schools, you know? And that if you guys would be willing to partner with us to do, you know, to commit, that you would do that.
So that's what we're here for today. I, I understand that. That's the first step, right? And so we, for the last three years, maybe four years, we've hosted these meetings at the Comayam Municipal Building, which I think is not a good idea. Because number one, you can't even park down there. It costs to park. So you don't, you miss a lot of the people that we're trying to capture. And so this was our first meeting and I'm hoping that after today it grows. People will find out, hey, now they're meeting in the community. Word of mouth, mouth, it was spread to the homeless population and whoever it needs to reach. But yes, I am more than willing to do that. And in fact, if you have any other locations that you think we should move the meeting to, let me know and we'll do it. But I think starting here, having the meetings here every month, the last Wednesday, people will start telling people, it will grow the meeting in itself. And we usually, just really quick, we usually have more service providers here as well too. We have the DPDs with us, we have the COTS here, we have COC board members. Those are the people that need to be here who, uh, make those decisions, as you said, that can reach into and touch the people. So yes, you have my commitment.
Well, yes, and you know, if, if, if I can put this out here, like when we have our community meetings or if you take a day and you actually come to the soup kitchen.
And, and just. So let me just clear that because I actually have several times. I have been here to feed the people, uh, hands on. I have been in NSO, I have walked through COTS. I have done the point and time count where I actually go out and count the homeless population. Uh, we have held homeless barbecue events where we, I mean, we're engaging with the homeless population. So I think I'm probably not the one that you're talking about when you say reach the, because I'm constantly doing it. But as far, I get what you're saying. I do. I get what you're saying. I think it's a great idea, but I think the Homeless Task Force is a great opportunity to bring those individuals to the community. So I'm open to work with you to answer your question. And if you have any, any other ideas, let me know. But I, I love your point. I think it's a great point. I hear that often a lot, actually.
My biggest idea is bringing the resource to the kitchen, all the resources, you know what I'm saying? I talk to everybody here. So if you a resource person, please get with me or the other chapters and you come in and speak to these people one on one. We have four chapters.
And really quick, you said a community meeting. So you all host your own community meetings?
Yeah, see like for the counter kitchen, we have ours on Friday. Meldrum's, they have theirs on Monday.
Okay.
On Mondays, uh, St. Leo's has theirs on Tuesdays. So there's, Noah has theirs on Thursdays. So our chapters have different community meetings.
And I'm sure they're well attended too.
Well, and, you know, because people come in and get a meal. So, you know, when you're talking about the task force, it would be good for, you know, I'm not just talking about you, but the, your whole task force to just come out and, and.
And, and, yeah.
And then because there may be things that you can learn from them, like I say, you know, talking about the people coming here.
I agree.
But then more, the people are more like, well, why can't the people come to us?
No, no, I will commit to coming to your community meeting.
Okay.
Myself, I will be there or one of my staff members will show up at some times, but we will come to, to hear what people have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that, that advice. Oh, wait, it was, oh, okay. And then right here?
Yes, thank you. Uh, uh, what I was trying to say, you know, I've been listening to a lot of things because one thing I do is sit in a lot of meetings, I, I grasp a lot of information. I heard a lot of information here. See, the thing is that I'm realizing, you know, that we have to come together and make sure we all be on one page. So we can all be able to network properly and we can get strength from that. Because I have, you know, just like we were talking about, uh, um, uh, different people, you know, in position, you know, I know, you know, a lot of, uh, uh, people, well-known people in the city, you know what I'm saying, that can really do some things for us. But we need to come together so to let them know what we really need. Cause we can't come, we had, we had to be on same page so we can reach out and get what we need. Because just like we said, coming over here, I got some other places and some other people that's willing to help us, you know, be able to grow, you know, that, you know, a couple of judges, you know, a couple of folks in business, major businesses, you know, that'll help us. If we able to be able to let them know what we truly need, but we have to come together and we have to go into places, we have to go into the higher ups. You know what I'm saying? Just like we pick up on the phone, you know what I'm saying? We want to talk to somebody. You know what I'm saying? We don't want to even talk about push two or three. We need to talk to some people. Human, human commitment, human beings with a passion for life. Cause I understand being in these soup kitchens. I understand being homeless, because I was. I understand being sick with cancer. You cannot heal, your spirit must heal. The whole person must heal. All for you, be able to go out in the park and be able to grasp the same people that you are. Bring them to, to let them know that somebody loves you too. Cause you are, just like I say, you are human too. You know, somebody loves you, somebody cares, somebody needs you. These kids, I almost cried. That kid came in there wanting to get some milk. It had a dollar. He wanted, all he wanted was some milk and some cereal. His parents wasn't home. You know, their kids need us. You know, you know, you know, when we talk about the community, you say take a community to raise, we have to raise these kids. These are our kids too. They are our kids too. You know, that is my mama. You know, that lady that had the bottle, you know, sitting up there in cans and didn't have, wasn't hungry. That was my mama too. That was my grandmama. Cause I understand, you know, because I have a heart for people. You know, ain't nothing wrong with loving somebody. And that's what this is about. The union is in the community. Y'all forgive me for being late and I forgot my shirt because I was running, because I do a lot of things. Fuck him.
Great, great. And, and so awesome.
Kingdom work.
She wanted, she wanted to say something that I wanted to add. I wanted to add to that after my sister gets finished, uh, saying what she wants to say. So, so anytime change is made in any community, it's the voice that makes the change. It's us who have to go out into the community and make that change. So that's why I'm so glad that she started this, this Homeless Task Force meeting in the community. Anytime change has been made in these United States, it's the voice that makes the change. The voice of the people. And when you had a voice of a people with a politician or a person who can stand in the gap like Mary Sheffield, things happen. So, so we have our mediator to, to the, to the higher ups. We have to make the, we have to have the voice. We have to make the noise. So that she can take these concerns and concerns like these to, to, to places where it can help us out.
Acupuncturist.
I feel the fear.
Amen. First, I just want to speak to everybody. I've been out of the scene for a while. Um, I am at the Housing Coalition. I'm definitely housing quite a few people and keeping people out of tax foreclosure, right? So, um, a lot is going on in our city and I know that you guys probably spoke about those things. Um, but one thing that I just wanted to mission, mention is some of the things that's going on in Lansing that's actually trickling down to us. Um, so I do a lot for placement with, um, the shelters. I'm definitely placing, I have a voucher on my desk right now for the NSO because they walk right around the corner to me, um, and which I don't mind. But things are changing. Our society is changing. The rules are changing and I think we don't really know a lot about that change, especially as it pertains to housing. Housing is the, the fundamental foundation of all of this. That's what started all of this. So all I wanted to say in that sense is, um, when we network and when we do have, um, a networking session, that perhaps we can have all of our networkers or our sponsors together before we have some of these task force meetings, there are some things that we need to iron out as networking partners. Um, a lot of times in the business and in the circle of things, I see that we all are not working together. And so that becomes a problem. I don't want to step on Mr. Carey toes, even though he knows I will, to get my clients a voucher when I could simply call him and say, Mr. Carey, we need to get this voucher together. And together we can combatively target the state of Michigan to get some of these vouchers for people who, um, don't have housing or are low income or need vouchers to actually be placed into some of this housing that's coming into the city. So that's just a suggestion of mine that maybe perhaps as, as, um, organizations, you know, we should be having a meeting also so that we can network and know where each other, you know, is at and where we can also grow further.
Um, Latrice, this is for you. At your housing, um, coalition, do you guys help people that have little nicks or little issues that the other, uh, places on? Cause Tim Peterborough don't help you if you have a felony. Tim Peterborough don't help you if you have a certain situation. So can you elaborate on your situation?
I, um, I provide all resources. I've been doing this now for five years. So, um, the one great thing about being in the agency is that I can provide more than housing. I try and provide, um, resources that the DAC started, such as street court outreach. I try and position organizations where they're working together and partnering together. The Housing Coalition, if you guys don't know what we do, we actually do tax foreclosure, landlord tenant. We have a clinic inside of 36 District Court. We do housing placement. We play on security deposits for first month rent. We do most things pertaining to housing, but we have opened up to resources. We do, we have attorneys on staff there. We are working on expongements. We are working on, um, of the ordinance that was brought in by Mary Sheffield for landlords and. for landlords, enforcing them, sending emails, following back up on things. And then, we also, you know, as an extra added bonus, I get to come out and still be a part of my organization and still see the people, still come into some of the chapters on Tuesdays and Fridays. I haven't made it on Thursday, but I have an open commitment to make it over to Noah on Thursday for their meeting. But, other than that, again, it's really about pooling together. Don't let it stop here. Don't leave here and think that you have to wait on your councilperson to tell you where to go next. No one person has to tell me where to go, I'm going there and I'm going to see what's going on. So, that if they don't bring it back, I can.
All right.
Don't stop here.
Amen.
This is the beginning.
That's right. Let's go. All right, was there any other comments? Cuz I wanna make sure we wrap up by five and I know there was a few events going on in the community. I want people to make sure that they can speak on their events. Yes, you have your hand up in the back.
Right quick, before, cuz I do have to be at a meeting.
Okay. Is this for Reverend?
Right quick. Solutions, solutions. And solutions, what happened was, when I started doing, we started doing our thing 19 years ago, which Mr. Kerry is well-aware. I had some funders, I had some funders, and this is for the task force and it's for DAC. I had some funders come to me who wanted to fund what we do. And when you, you need people to help you do what you do. And what they came up with was, we wanna give you X amount of money, but we also want you to do something. And the solution is this, if you wanna know what's going on, you gotta get in the middle of this thing. So, they came up with an idea of sending somebody in the shelter. Right? Sending somebody in there to bring back a report. To really get the facts. To actually get the facts. And so, they chose me to do it. My wife, I tell you, my wife didn't want me to do it cuz I had to be gone for a while. I had to be gone for a minute. And they chose me to do it, right? And that's how I get the hands-on experience. That's how I know how people actually feel because you gotta get down there, in there with them. If you really gonna know what people are feeling, what they're dealing with, I had to be homeless. I had to actually be in, you know what I'm talking about, right? I'm talking about actually go in the shelter.
No, for sure, yeah, yeah.
And stay.
Yeah.
So, that's a great idea for us as the task force, as the DAC. Because you get all type of hearsay.
Yeah, for sure.
But if you really wanna know.
You go in there and see for yourself. Brandon, do you have something else you wanted to add? You sure? Brandon, before you leave, I wanna make sure I have your number. Go ahead.
Hello, everybody, how y'all doing? Running a little late, but I'm here. I have a question and an idea that we can all, everybody in this room can collectively do, including the task force, is collectively, maybe once a month, put together a brochure that everybody in this room I can take and pass out to the community. Because there are so many, especially young people, that are squatting in houses and homeless, don't know where to get help and don't know about these things. Sometimes they don't have bus fare to go to the Housing Coalition. It's not that they don't want, cuz I ran up in a house, I didn't run up in there, but I came across a house where at least seven different 20, 19-to-23-year-olds are living with kids and pregnant and they're just together and squatting in this place, but they don't know where to get help. So, it, you know, I'm just asking that can we, together, put this brochure, maybe DAC can add it to theirs, to where, Mary, you can put the information that you have for the community on there so we can really get it out in the community? Because there's still a lot of people that we have in touch and don't know.
Oh, for sure. Great idea and we can work on that. I know the Youth Committee was working on something as well, to a brochure. Maybe we can combine all that information into one document to try to get out to the community.
Public site, putting liquor stores and everything.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And also have an announcement at the end when that time comes.
We get ready to go to announcements, let me just say one thing again. So, with the Homeless Bill of Rights, I'm going to draft a memo, we talked with you about this, Brandon, already, to submit to our Legislative Policy Division to begin to draft the ordinance based on what's before us. Thank you. And I'm gonna do that by the end of this week. Just so you guys know, there's gonna be some follow-through, though, right? So, there may be some additional information needed and things of that sort. So, please make sure you stay in contact with us. Brandon is gonna be leading it and we're gonna be in contact with him, but we're gonna probably need additional information and more kind of dialogue around this, but we are gonna submit it so they can begin to draft the ordinance starting this week. Now, we're gonna turn it over to events and wanted to recognize Dianetta Simpson, who's in the building. She's been in the community a long time, give it up for Dianetta. Any announcements or events that are going on around homelessness that people wanna present at this time? Clark, you said you had a fundraiser? Go ahead, she's gonna start, he's gonna start in the back and then move our way up.
Okay, this is a United States effort. So, forgive me, my European peoples, nothing against you, but we are, we are giving, we have the opportunity as Black people to do a Black census survey. This Black census survey asks you questions such as the discussions that we're having and other things that you're, problems that people are having in their life. They have a chance, they have a slot on there that you can add how you feel about things, if you can change things. The goal is 200,000 Black people around the United States linking up together. My job is 1,200 and I think that it would be great. And you also have that avenue to at least swap ideals, build power, have connection with other people in other states. Cuz, you know, New York, Atlanta and all these different places, we are suffering through the same thing in everywhere.
Yes, yes.
And collectively, we can be very stronger.
Okay. If you have the information on a survey, make sure you give it to us so that we can get it out and we would love to be a part of that.
If y'all write it down right now, cuz I'm gonna run out the door after I say it. Somebody got a pen?
Write what down? You have a website or?
Well, for those who don't know.
Go ahead.
It's BLK CNS dot US forward slash MIVO. Anybody need to hear that again?
Say it one more time.
BLK CNS dot US forward slash MIVO. And that's the Black Census Survey and I think that we all collectively need to take that.
Thank you so much. Mr. Washington?
Yes. Yeah, the DAC is celebrating a 10-year birthday. We've been, they've been in existence for 10 years now. And on July the 6th, we're having our birthday party fundraiser right here at this soup kitchen. Right here. And tickets are $25. Tickets are $25, but you could go to our website or our Facebook page and also make donations and everything. We're asking for funders to donate to us and stuff. And all DAC members, we are asking y'all to try to come too, you know. Where, it's like I said, the tickets are $25, but if you're a dues-paying member and your dues are paid up and everything, we can get you a ticket for $10. You know, because our funders, we're depending on our funders, like the city council and people like that, you know, to throw in a little extra, you know, so to help cover that other $15 for us and stuff, you know, so we can get some of our members there too. Yes, but that's on July the 6th. Well, no, they say 120. Oh, yeah, it's from, what, 5 to 8?
5 to 8, next Friday.
From 5 to 7, Friday on the 6th.
Okay.
Oh, my birthday is on the 5th, so, yeah, my birthday, so we celebrate my birthday too.
Happy birthday.
So, y'all, y'all can bring presents.
All right, so we appreciate you all coming out. Again, the task force meets the last Wednesday of the month from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. We have now committed to meeting in the community, so spread the word. We will be here if we have approval from the soup kitchen, which I'm assuming they're gonna allow us to be here. Thank you so much. The meeting is now adjourned. Safe travels and thank you all so much for coming out.